It is 6:00 PM. I will call the workshop of the School Board to order. First on our agenda is roll call. We'll start with Mr. Bryant.
Here.
Ms. Buck?
Here.
Mr. Derrick's?
Here.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Here.
Ms. Tower?
Here.
Ms. Titts?
Here.
And Cher is here. All seven members are present along with Superintendent Anderson. Will go ahead and rise and share the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, through the republic which is grand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will reiterate our mission of the Red Wing Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students as they realize their full potential and become respectful, responsible, and productive citizens. The agenda for this evening, for this workshop, is to discuss and have an update on our equitable plan. And because it is a workshop, there is no change to the agenda and there will be no public comment at this time. And as I understand it, Jess, you're here to give us an update on where we're at and to lead off our discussion. I'll turn it over to you and welcome.
Thanks, everyone. I believe that we are going to start our discussion tonight with two employees from EAB and I'll let them introduce themselves. But we can talk about our involvement that we've had after, but I think they'll kind of describe what their work is and how that interacts with what we do here in Red Wing Public Schools. Is that fair?
Can you introduce what EAB means for those of you?
Yeah, it's, you guys correct me if I'm wrong, but what if I have seen as EAB doesn't have, is not an acronym, but it's a company that does research and it's a research firm that we've used to look into best practice for a lot of different root causes that we've talked about at the school board level, at our administrative level, and at the teacher level. They started their work in the secondary level, but now have brought their research down to a K-12. Is that, you guys correct me if I'm off.
No, you got it, Jess. Now that's it. Yeah.
Thank you.
Josh, should I go ahead and share my deck now and just, and run through? Let me make sure that I can get here in presentation mode. Let's give that a moment. Looks like everybody can see that, right?
Sure.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's really a privilege and a pleasure to meet with you and to be able to talk with you about this critical topic, the behaviors and actions that promote racial justice in education. I'm Jane Alexander and I'm a senior director here at EAB. And just in the next slide, Jess, you did a great intro to EAB. I'll give you a bit more of an overview of who we are and what we do and how we help schools and school districts. I'm also joined by my research colleague, Alyssa Bicella. Alyssa has been foundational to a lot of the research that we're going to be sharing with you today and she's also co-facilitating. So I will turn the presentation over to her about mid-flight room. So with that, let me go to our next slide here and give you a minute to just introduce those of you who are unfamiliar to EAB, to who we are and what our work is. We help schools and districts support students from kindergarten to college and beyond. Our solutions are rooted in research and we partner with school and district leadership to solve their most pressing challenges. We provide best practice advice and guidance that we source from schools and districts across the country as well as from our own in-house experts. It's certainly probably no surprise to you all that racial justice has been at the top of the list of challenges that our partners are grappling with right now and is the topic of our, of our conversation this evening. One of the reasons that we're focusing specifically on racial justice this evening is because of the death of George Floyd. And I know that this hits very close to home for you all. And his death, as well as the deaths of others, have really reinvigorated the civil rights movement in America across 2020. And just some of the names that we can't forget are here on the left of the slide paired with statistics of Google searches for hashtag Black Lives Matter online. Racial justice has been a struggle in this country since its inception and we've seen years of murders of black individuals. But as you can see, public awareness of racial justice really didn't spike until 2020. With this awareness of racial injustice and the Black Lives Matter movement, also came this spike in self-education as people were rushing to their Amazon app to read books like Quiet Fragility and, and others. But it isn't just long overdue awareness that rose this year. It's an unprecedented level of action that's been most important. And you can see on the bottom of the slide that despite being in a pandemic, Americans last year took the street in record numbers to demand change, making these protests one of the largest movements in our country's history. Public awareness and action around racial justice reached unprecedented levels in 2020. But there are three primary reasons why it's imperative for K-12 education leaders to sustain momentum and make real progress in the months and the years ahead. Prioritizing racial justice work is going to be critical to our missions, to our financial sustainability, and more urgent in the current climate, socio-political climate, as school districts face changing student and family demographics as they recover from the impacts of COVID and are immersed in this national momentum around racial justice. I'm going to dive a little bit deeper into each of these three forces in more detail to look at how well K-12 education institutions are realizing their mission of serving BIPOC students. We've already seen the racial and ethnic diversity of the K-12 student body increase over time, but it's generally known that the diversity of teachers lags far behind. Looking at the top of the slide here, you can see a nearly 9% representation gap between black student enrollment and teacher employment, and then a 17% representation gap between Hispanic student enrollment and teacher employment. Diversifying student ranks, this has long been a priority for many districts. And the incremental progress that we've seen over time has only grown more urgent in the light of the conversations that we're having nationally on race. But the challenge at hand runs deeper than that. As you can see here at the bottom of the slide, the vast majority of leaders at the top of K-12 education hierarchy, so these are principals, superintendents, school boards, identify as whites. This lack of racial diversity among teachers, staff, and leadership not only contributes to the perception of a majority culture at K-12 institutions, but it almost, also limits our ability to effectively teach, mentor, and also support a diverse student body. It's imperative then that we critically examine what the experience is like for BIPOC students once they arrive in our schools. White and Asian students generally report higher levels of safety and feel more secure and connected at school compared to their black and American Indian and Hispanic peers. This is probably in no small part due to the data that you see at the top of this slide. This data is just a tip of the iceberg around what we now frequently are talking about, the school-to-prison pipeline. BIPOC students, particularly black students, are more likely to experience harsh, zero-tolerance, exclusionary discipline practices. These include suspensions or expulsions or even referrals to law enforcement. This not only leads to a significant amount of lost instructional time for these students, but also a greater likelihood of disengagement and then drop out from school. Here, captured on the bottom of the slide, are findings from a study out of Northwestern University that brings to light the impact of racial bias inside the classroom. Researchers found that the experience of race-based stressors like racial prejudice or the pressure to outperform negative racial stereotypes actually leads the body to pump out more stress hormones in BIPOC adolescents, especially black and Latinx youth. And what emerges here is a picture of BIPOC students whose concentration, motivation, and ultimately their learning is impaired by unintended or overt racism. Next, let's look at the second urgent force for change and at the ways in which progress on racial justice is going to impact the financial sustainability of K-12 institutions. Total enrollment in public K-12 schools is projected to increase to over 51 million students by fall of 2029. But at the same time, the racial and ethnic distribution of public school students across the country is going to continue to shift. The percentage of students who are white is projected to continue to decrease to about 44% through 2029, while the percentage of students who are Hispanic, Asian Pacific, Islander, or two or more races is projected to increase. The major disruptions to education resulting from COVID-19 and these changing demographics are going to require districts and schools to work more intentionally to overcome longstanding trust gaps that exist between BIPOC families and public schools. At the same time, districts will need to engage white communities and families as perceptions and assessments of school quality are almost always tied to how white or how affluent the demographics of the district are. District leaders will need to address the anxieties many people feel about what is at stake for their own child as schools engage in critical equity and anti-racism work. This is no easy task. It's going to require thoughtful and proactive engagement. And finally, the last urgent force of pushing us toward change, the current campus climate. There is more national momentum around racial justice than ever before and your students, your young alumni, they're the most active citizens in the country. As you can see across the top of the slide, millions of young people across the globe have participated in widespread organized protests. Students are demanding more, both in volume and in scope, and they use this past year's attention on racial justice to raise new concerns, re-raise past concerns, and then have an emphasis on renewed urgency for institutional leaders to make change. Gen Z now see the pandemic and Black Lives Matter as the two most impactful events of their lifetimes. And as you can see at the bottom of the slide, the vast majority of Gen Z took at least one action to protest. These could include organizing an event, posting on social media, or learning more about how they can continue to support racial justice. As you know, students, they expect a fast response and they also want clearly outlined next steps about what you're doing to address the issues at hand. And leaving demands un- or under addressed risks further damaging relationships with your student body. Now, I want to pause for a moment and acknowledge that some schools and school districts have been at this work for quite a while and they consider themselves to be very progressive, while there are other institutions that are newer to these conversations. And we saw that range on full display last summer as schools publicly responded to the murder of George Floyd. Our research team actually randomly selected 200 institutions and looked at the statements that they released in the aftermath of George Floyd's murder in May 2020. The goal of our analysis was to help us understand how education leaders were talking about racism in their communities and the types of commitments they were making in this moment to advance racial justice. We were initially really excited about this flurry of long overdue action, but as we got deeper into the statements, into our analysis, we did see several emerging trends that gave us pause about the longer-term prognosis of this fight against anti-racism. From our statement analysis, we learned that the obstacles to addressing racism in education can be organized into these four categories that you see along the bottom of the slide. So overall, we've seen that most people think about racism solely on an individual or interpersonal level. And as a result, solutions around racial inequities center on the individual. For example, anti-bias trainings, book clubs, workshops. But beyond the individual level, many lacked a clear understanding of how these policies, programs, and processes work together to reinforce racism on a structural level. The second barrier we surfaced was a clear lack of long-term priorities and strategy. In addition to a lack of strategy and priorities, very few statements or plans had accountability measures to incentivize racial equity centrally or across the institution. And then finally, silos. They're a considerable obstacle in addressing systemic racism. When there's no mechanism for coordination between individuals and schools across a district, there's no way racial justice efforts can sustain for the long term or collectively move the dial on institutional goals. So with that, to begin to dismantle systemic racism, we found that institutions really need a comprehensive and guiding framework. And I'm going to turn the presentation over to Alyssa to walk us through this framework and how we can begin to make progress in these very difficult areas and overcome the challenges that we just reviewed.
Thanks, Jane. Yes, I'm going to pick it up here on our framework here. As Jane mentioned, you know, when we got into our research, we really identified a need for kind of a comprehensive guide that could marry these really big transformative goals with more granular components that could support ongoing action across all levels of a school district. So that unifying framework could really become the touchstone to guide racial justice work year over year. Here on this slide, you see EAB's framework for that transformation, the hallmarks of an anti-racist education institution. We're going to take a closer look at each one of these hallmarks to give you a better sense for what we've seen, especially across the last year. And in overwork of the work, it really needs to happen within each one. But before I jump into the first one, do want to emphasize here that the end goal is not checking one particular box next to each one of these and calling it a day. The goal is really to develop a continuous practice across your district to, so that racial justice remains the centerpiece to your district's mission and work going forward. So let's begin with school climate. Jane talked a little bit earlier in the presentation about racial inequities in school discipline, bias inside the classroom. Going to build on that just a bit. And you can see on the left side of the slide that race and ethnicity is the most common motivation behind hate and bias incidents in schools. At the same time there, you can see that many school administrators are not prepared to handle these types of incidents. And how we plan for, address, and move forward from bias incidents, both the big ones and the small ones, really determines the progress we can make toward building a school community where respect for diversity and differences is truly a lived core value. In the statement analysis that Jane mentioned, we most frequently saw that schools planned to address climate through a diversity or anti-bias training of some sort. And for this type of focus in the last year on training, it's a big concerning to us because we've seen in the research that these types of trainings more frequently could teach us the vocabulary of diversity rather than create long-term changes in behavior. And don't get me wrong, training and establishment but it has to be done in conjunction with broader, ongoing efforts to foster practical learning and regular dialogue and dialogue that doesn't just occur after a major incident. So anti-racist institutions build an inclusive school climate that promotes learning and safety for all of its community members, going to create mechanisms for black, indigenous, and people of color to regularly share their experiences in our schools, identify specific problems, and have those issues really taken seriously, and to co-create specific strategies to build safe and inclusive school climates for all students. Next, to school climate, we're going to take a look at institutional culture here with our next hallmark. So anti-racist institutions really center and celebrate the lived experiences of BIPOC within their institutional culture. For much of the last year, I'm sure you've all seen headlines that have rolled in cataloging the number of Confederate statues that have been removed, the buildings in the schools that have been renamed, the mascots that have been replaced by more inclusive symbols. There's been a lot of focus in that arena and we've heard lots of stories about how polarizing and fraught that navigating those changes can be. Districts absolutely need to acknowledge these ways that traditions and symbols can enforce racist ideals in their communities, but the work here is not narrowly contained to that, to those changes. The work here is not done after renaming a single building and kind of moving on from there. These efforts to change symbols, traditions, can't be detached from explicit, open, and ongoing conversations about districts' historical ties to segregation, other facets of their founding, local history, and the racial landscape there. Districts and schools need to openly acknowledge these historical legacies and work with BIPOC to promote healing and transformation moving forward together. The quote on the right hand of the slide really captures the need for districts to be proactive about creating spaces and experiences to explore shared history and about engaging in traditions and celebrations that highlight the cultural assets of BIPOC students, teachers, staff, and families. Next, we're going to look at curricular and co-curricular experiences. Now, since the 1990s, racial achievement gaps, and I'm speaking mostly about standardized test scores in the sense, every grade and subject have been narrowing. So that's, that's the good news. As of 2012, black, white, and white Hispanic achievement gaps were 30 to 40% smaller than they were in the 1970s. We see this progress also reflected in narrowing racial gaps in physical completion as well. But this progress has largely been pretty slow and uneven over the decades and racial gaps in educational equity and opportunity really remain sizable and persistent today. As you can see from the data on this slide here, despite graduating high school at unprecedented rates, black and Latinx students are underrepresented in advanced courses across the K-12 journey or continuum. And that's a trend we see with American Indian students as well. We've seen a lot of discussion about expanding the number of diverse books and curriculum materials and references in the curriculum. And of course, representation in the curriculum is critically important, but education leaders have also shared with us how hard and difficult to scale those types of changes can be. We hear about teachers being slow to change in their classrooms, especially those outside of the history department or other humanities. We also hear about parents and how parents can resist and challenge changes to the curriculum. So by and large, lots of times, the status quo remains. We really need to think beyond those efforts toward holistically reimagining how we engage and support BIPOC students in the entire educational experience. This means evaluating all the elements of the academic and co-curricular experience, teaching techniques, course sequencing, and placement practices, college advising, career development support. All of these components come together to influence not only successful high school completion, but ultimately college outcomes, success in the job market, and longer-term social mobility. Now, we're going to take a look at community partnerships. This is where we're really pushing our education partners to reach outside the boundaries of their own district through partnerships and advocacy. Anti-racist institutions establish robust partnerships to advocate for racial justice in the local and extended community. You know, there's a whole lot more in a district sphere of influence than a lot of leaders originally initially realize. Think about your procurement practices, your teacher education programs, and pipelines, your family and community engagement efforts that you're already taking on. Putting an anti-racism lens on the ways in which you structure and engage and work with the wider community can really go on to have impacts far beyond your own institution. We also know that work here can be hard. Investing here takes time, effort, as you navigate and build and renegotiate relationships and partnerships. To be successful, community partnerships should really be a scoped part of your district's DEIJ strategy and vision. Otherwise, they may not be sustainable for the long haul. But the good news about investing here, even when it's difficult and takes time, is that you're not alone in your racial equity journey. You don't have to do it all or know it all and have all of the expertise internally. Through partnerships with community-based organizations, advocacy, there's really true potential for long-term collective impact in your community, in your state, your region. And of course, that rolls up across society. Now, speaking of tying your community partnerships to your institutional strategy, we make our way to our strategy and operations hallmark, which is the cornerstone really that brings all of these other areas together. So within this hallmark, we see an increasing number of districts considering or filling the ever-proliferating role of Equity Director on their leadership teams. Go by numerous names, Director of Equity and Inclusion, Chief Equity Officers. And it's important to note that these practitioners are often disproportionately people of color. In some ways, this is a promising trend for us to note. If districts have really become willing to dedicate real dollars to these positions, part-time or full-time, really suggests a whole new level of commitment to meeting the needs of every student. But despite being an invaluable resource, if we're talking about transformation across a district, a single individual cannot take this work on alone. Anti-racist institutions consistently assess all institutional strategy, policies, operations through a racial justice lens. So that means anti-racism becomes an embedded, consistent practice across all decision-making and at every level of the district. Really found that before you dive into one hallmark or, you know, one area of work over another, you need to start by looking at your strategy and operations first for three main reasons. The first is that this work needs to be taken on holistically across the district, across schools, across departments. And if you don't have a shared sense of priorities and strategy in place, work's going to be really, really hard to sustain for the long haul. The second is that you need to have conversations about this work regularly and at every level of the institution. Occurred across our research calls a common theme that navigating difficult decisions, resource trade-offs, community pushback is much easier when you have all senior leadership, especially on the same page. And finally, you need to intentionally break that cycle of burdening a single Equity Director, a single individual, or your BIPOC community with advocating and advancing this work alone. You need to set clear accountability throughout the organization around ownership, timeframes, measures of success for this work. And since we've got you all here as a leadership group, we're going to take a quick look at one case study to show how careful attention to the strategy and operations piece can really enable your institution to take a coordinated and systemic approach to this work. Here, we're going to look at the work of Almarle County Public Schools located in Charlottesville, Virginia. As a district, they delved more deeply into anti-racism and racial equity work after the 2017 Charlottesville riots. And their approach since then offers a bit of a guideline for how districts can empower an accountability team to spearhead implementation of central policy and strategy year over year. First, they created a centralized commitment to anti-racism along with structural leadership behind that. They have a central steering committee made up of district, department, and school leadership, which sets clear strategic goals and that group is tasked with tracking progress toward strategy milestones. Then prioritized, prioritized discrete areas for immediate data-driven action. So that steering committee is broken down further into five subcommittees and each of those subcommittees tackle one specific area of Almarle's central commitment. They oversee data collection, suggest very tactical recommendations to move the work forward. Third, they establish transparency and feedback loops through frequent committee and subcommittee meetings, collaboration with a student advisory group, and regular report outs to their wider community. So this really creates momentum for them, accountability for action, and provides regular opportunity for updates and for input. At the bottom of the slide, you can see an example of how they took a commitment from policy to action under their curriculum and instruction goal. The subcommittee was charged with conducting research in this area, developed based on whose needs surfaced from teachers, an anti-racist curriculum vetting tool to help all teachers assess their lessons and resources with an anti-racism lens. Our last hallmark that we're going to wrap up with here addresses teachers and staff, so your workforce. And we're ending here on this hallmark to set the stage for some deeper conversation that you all are going to have on the topic of hiring later this summer. But when you dig into why education institutions' workforces aren't diverse, the root causes really have to do with every single part of the talent journey, from how candidates are sourced to the interview process, onboarding structures. And throughout our research, we found that typically districts have been spending quite a bit of time talking about recruitment and hiring and equity in that process, but they aren't talking as, what they aren't talking as much about is retention, which we're going to unpack a little bit more on this slide. You can see in the middle there that 50% of BIPOC teachers feel comfortable being themselves in their school and that compares to 71% of white teachers. We surfaced, you know, in our research, repeated mentions of this invisible tax. We surfaced, you know, in our research, repeated mentions of this invisible tax placed on BIPOC teachers. Some examples, you know, are when the black male teacher is expected to be the de facto disciplinarian in the school or when BIPOC teachers are automatically seen as experts on all things cultural diversity and repeatedly go the extra mile to support BIPOC students and families. And those are efforts that are often kind of unrecognized. Or, you know, BIPOC teachers who are actively discouraged from customizing their instruction to be culturally relevant for their students. The manifestations of this are varied, but very common. Not a surprise then that nationally BIPOC teachers have a higher turnover rate compared to their white peers. So really want to hit home that hiring efforts do go to waste if retention is left unaddressed. If you don't create an equitable and inclusive culture pathways to advancement, you're really going to have a revolving door on hiring, not only losing great talent, but these perpetual exits impact student relationships and employee morale as well. So again, you're going to dive deeper into this workforce component, talking about recruitment and hiring in August. But for now, Jane and I are going to unshare the slides and open up our time for Q and A. Time permitting, Jess, feel free to let us know how much time we've got or, you know, when we need to, you need to cut us off.
By the way, if I could, EAB does these national research studies. They also do school-specific work as well in conjunction with our teams. And when we asked them to come to this workshop tonight, we asked them to reduce their two to three-hour presentation to 20 to 30 minutes. And so this is just a real cursory overview, just to let you know some of the things that we're looking at internally. And so there's a lot more detail in the work that you, we appreciate you sharing that. And I'm sure there might be some questions for you.
Any questions for these guests of ours this morning or this evening? Holly?
I'm going to start with a question where the rubber meets the road. At EAB in your organization, how many people of color do you have working there?
I can think of that question. This, it has been, as Karsten said, we had to cut a lot of content from this presentation. And we had included in that exactly that, a reflection on our own journey at EAB, on our own commitments to diversity, to equity and to inclusion, and the work that we're, we're doing here. And we had to, we're a very diverse research team. I also had to cut our team's slide. And our team had these difficult conversations. They said, we are more diverse in this team doing this work than we are at EAB. How did, you know, staffing conversations, why are we staffed here? A lot of, for me, personal reflection of where do I fit in this space? What voice do I have to share? What voice does my team have to share? And what is EAB doing to make progress toward the commitments we have put forth? I'll say, we're not perfect. We're not. And we thought, and we asked, should we be doing this work when we know we're not there? And we know that we're going to be asking schools and districts to get there along with us. But we felt like it was too critical to wait until there was perfection within our institution, to not go along the journey with the, with our partners. And it is a journey. And everyone is at a different stage here, both personally, I know I am, institutionally, we all are. And so I appreciate that question because that's tough and that's hard. And no, we're not where we need to be. And yes, we're committed to get there. But we also internally run into the same barriers that I just put up on that slide. And so I know that it's a lot of work that we're doing together. So we invite our partners to join the journey and our team pushes internally for us to get to where we need to be as well.
Nikki's in the queue.
Okay, but that's still to answer our question on racially diverse. Your EAB is, I, I don't know how many people who are racially diverse on this call right now, but I am. And I actually kind of felt a little offended by how you had worded something. You almost made it feel like, as an indigenous person in my homelands, may I add? Like, pretty soon in 2029, there's going to be all these ethnic people around. And how are we going to learn how to deal with them? That's, that's how I felt as a biracial person. So I, that's, the key of like really knowing who is ethnically diverse on your team, because maybe that could have been spotted beforehand, because I know I got a little offended by that, how that was stated. Because in our culture, when we talk about when our European brothers and sisters came to our territory, it's a really beautiful story in how it's a prophecy that someday there are going to be more of our Wasachi brothers and sisters than there are the stars in the sky. That's, that's actually a more beautiful tone versus just like, I just didn't really care for how that data was presented, even though it may be true. So knowing, you know, like I said, having somebody there to kind of like, you know, that is culturally sensitive to things.
Thank you so much for that, that comment, Nikki. And I, I learn every time I give this presentation. Thank you for pointing out that side. And absolutely, we don't have American Indian representation on our team. While it is diverse, it is a small team of six researchers. So we only have as much, you know, diversity as we can within those limitations. We do vet all our presentations with partners as well and continually receive feedback because we are learning and we are growing. And we're not getting it always right. So thank you for that, to push us farther and to push us to be better.
Jim, go ahead.
Thank you. Nice presentation, but I'll say, I don't think you answered Holly's question. You worked around it, but you didn't actually answer it. So what is your percentage? You said you worked around it. Nikki kind of went and added a little bit too, but you never really answered the question.
Do you guys want me to present the slide? I found it in the presentation.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Are you seeing that?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Is that correct? Jane, sorry, this is the one that I found on your website.
Yep, this is our research team. But I think the question Holly had asked was representation within EAB, is that correct? So maybe as a large company, we are, I don't know, 3,000, 4,000 individuals. And I don't actually have the racial breakdown. We're a national company, so we have offices in Washington DC all the way through Chicago and Texas. So I can certainly follow up with you if you're interested in those, in those stats. And I'll have to, I'll have to tap our, our talent division to get you that.
That's fine. That, that just kind of answers it better. You just, you didn't answer it at all. You kind of went around it. So, yeah, just thank you. I think it was a great question, so.
Absolutely. Yeah, Holly?
I just wanted a chance to expound on it. As a white person, I am craving knowledge from, from a diverse group of people about what's going on in the world and their collective stories and individual stories. So I love the research. I love, you know, the bullet points of what we're finding out. But I am craving the interpretations and narrations of authentic people who live in this country and who have to, you know, be a part of this world where they've been outsiders or pushed outside for so long. So that's why it's really important to me that we get a perspective from a group. And like I said, I appreciate the facts and the information and the knowledge where it can be an authentic approach to how do we address this in Red Wing Public Schools and in our community? You know, a partnership or something that EAB could be looking at would be helpful just as a place to start. But that's why I initially asked that question is because I'm craving that.
Go ahead, Nikki.
As, wow. I'd say second generation here, because my grandmother was part of the residential school. So she didn't attend school here. She attended school in Pipestone until she was from five to 18. We could talk about race all day from my father's experience and my experience. But the thing is, is like merged with what your group does and the research and then what Holly said, maybe collaborating with the people of color around here, especially with Prairie Island Indian community, that is the nearest tribal sovereign nation to this district, the school district. I am a proud member from the Prairie Island Indian community. But, and different ethnicities in their experience here. Because I can sit there and tell a lot of people, a lot of people get it, you know, they understand and stuff. But some people, no matter what, there's still that barrier, that trauma barrier. And it may not necessarily have to do with me, just maybe an experience that they had in their life with maybe another indigenous person. But no matter hearing my story, it's sometimes that it doesn't, it took, for a specific issue I had, it took somebody listening to a white man with blonde hair and blue eyes in order to understand my struggles as an indigenous woman in my homeland. So that's where that comes in nice. And also with talking with my uncle and everybody else, it's just like, your people, they really like data. They do. They like breakdowns. They like facts, you know? And sometimes we're just, we're very simple people, indigenous people. I only speak on behalf of, a lot of others are similar or, but we're simple, you know? Much like the story I just told and beforehand. But it's good, everything's always better when we collaborate together. Oh my gosh, did you hear that little rhyme I just came up with? But, and I honestly think that that's how we're going to break down. Hold on, I wrote it down. An anti-racist. No, I didn't write it down. Yes, I did. Oh, hallmarks of an anti-racist institution is seeing all the, everybody work together. It's not just one side doing the leg and the other. You know, there are many good things happening in the city of Red Wing too, you know? It's all in collaboration and reconciliation and moving forward. I think that's, so I think merge both of your ideas, Jane and Alyssa and Holly, and we'll really get somewhere.
Well, I heard two different things happening in our discussion tonight. One is, you know, how do we, what is the issues at hand? And who are we talking about when we talk about serving our students? And the other piece is, is making sure that we have hiring practices in place so that we can have staff members and teachers in place that can support our students as well. And I'm going to just talk about that piece for a minute because, you know, in a, in a northern predominantly white, small community in Minnesota, I think that's, I think we have to own that that is a, a challenge. Because as you've probably learned in your work too, the pool of qualified candidates who maybe want to work here in Red Wing, I think we have some folks here in Red Wing who would be willing to come forward and work with us as a staff people. But I, I think we would have to reach out beyond our community for some of these roles that we would be seeking. And so I think that's a challenge because it's, then it's not a school district issue. It's a Red Wing community issue. It has to be a welcoming place for all people. And, and so Nikki, I think you hit it right on the head when you said, I mean, we all have to collaborate. We all have to be committed, not just the school district, but it has to be a citywide, a countywide, a community-wide initiative. Or we can recruit and get a whole lot of people here, but it has to be a welcoming place for people to come as well. And we can do some things here to make, you know, the school welcoming and coworkers welcoming, you know, and be leaders in that way. But, you know, I think it's, it's a bigger issue than just what a school district can. I mean, it's a great place to start and we're committed to that, I think. But I, you know, I think it goes beyond this, our borders of a district, if that makes sense. Go ahead, Karsten.
Yeah, if I could, we'll be giving more information during the August workshop about recruitment, hiring and retention. I added that to the, to the line because of the presentation tonight. But I'll just give you a quick snapshot as far as what we've done over the last few weeks. We're starting to change our application process. So we're asking specific questions that will generate insights as far as how people work with diverse learners. And so we can start screening our applicants with that in mind. We'll do that not only for the written application, but also with interview processes. Another thing that I think has the most hope for Red Wing would be to develop stronger relationships with universities nearby. For example, River Falls, La Crosse and Winona State. So thanks to Thomas Harris, who's been working with some community groups, I've had meetings with La Crosse and Winona to try to get more student teachers in our district. And hopefully it's going to be, you know, a diverse group of student teachers. And I'm also thinking that we may want to consider at some time, this is not a formal proposal, but even possibly paying our student teachers to be here if we can. Because we need to differentiate ourselves from other school districts who don't pay student teachers. And then I also reached out to a local foundation to see if they might be interested in providing housing allowances for student teachers of color if they choose Red Wing to student teach. So again, that would not come out of our, our district funds. It would come out of a local foundation. Again, I haven't heard from them if that's a possibility. But those are just some of the things that we're starting to talk about. I'll share more in August.
Great. Other comments or questions?
Thank you for this presentation. I think, I guess what stuck out for me is that concept that, you know, it's bigger than any one person or any one training. And I think having the trainings, like there's a, you know, a staff training plan for this August that I think will be great. But it really is about everybody doing all of the work and all of us continuing to work together, that it doesn't just, you know, stop with making a statement or something like that. So, and that's harder. It's easier to schedule a one-day training and, or, you know, like, okay, we check that box. But that long-term, creating a culture where people feel valued, whether it's, you know, staff or students, that all people feel valued and respected and that they are welcome and integrated as part of our community regardless of, you know, their, their learning abilities, their color, their, you know, whatever their different situations might be, that we are a place that is open and welcoming. And, and that's hard, especially, you know, in a large institution. It's hard to give everybody what they need. But I think that that's, you know, what we're here to try to do.
Wilson? Holly?
This question is for Karsten. And I do want to give a huge shout out to the strategy and operations piece that you touched on in the last part where you said, all senior leadership need to be on the same page, which I think is critical. So as we look at Red Wing, a smaller district, Karsten, who do you see as senior leadership to be involved in this work?
If I had to choose specific leadership positions, it'd be the district directors and principals. But then there are other informal leaders throughout the district with different employee groups. But if I had to say, But if I had to say, it'd be district directors and principals.
You wouldn't include food staff and community ed and early childhood?
Oh, those, yeah, as I said at the very end. Well, first of all, Min and Don, you know, two community ed reps are, are part of that group.
Okay, okay.
Is, you know, they're already represented in that way. But also there are informal leaders. So for example, teacher leaders, secretarial leaders and, you know, others who should play a significant part as well. So yeah, it has to, and they mentioned it, it has to be throughout the organization, not just one person assigned that role.
Okay, good. Cause I'm, I'm even thinking, you know, custodial staff, there has to be common language, which is how I understood it. Am I correct? Alyssa and Jane, Jane, Jade? Sorry. Is that what you meant?
Yeah, I'll have you take that, Alyssa. Yeah, no, that is, that is absolutely correct. And I, I love the way you're thinking more expansively from just kind of district and building leadership. I think especially when we talk about building that shared vocabulary and the understanding of the direction, the shared goals that we're working toward. So, so important to get that buy-in across, you know, those folks that are gonna be able to support the day-to-day, the, the day-to-day work that happens on the ground, you know, the interpersonal interactions that are happening between people. Kind of move, you know, each interaction either moves you closer to or further from your goal. And I think having that buy-in you know, across the organization is super, super important. So yes, your interpretation is spot on and I really appreciate the way you're thinking about it.
Thank you.
We're on the same page, Holly.
All right, any last comments?
You know, one thing I, I'd just like to emphasize is that EAB is a, a research organization. They're not an advocacy group. So they do research projects about all sorts of K-12 and higher education topics. This year and last year, of course, they've really focused a lot on the pandemic as well as racial justice. And so, you know, they're presenting the information they've learned during a research project. And we really appreciate that you were able to join us today.
Thank you. It was really a privilege. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Back to you, Jess.
All right. Um, one of the, one of the things that we added as an extra, just so that, I'm, I'm not gonna go through it or anything. But if Anna and Nikki were a part, maybe Jennifer, were you a part of that team, the district equity team? No, Anna and Nikki, am I forgetting anybody? Okay. But we used the EAB Equity Self-Assessment that you guys see in your extras there in order to walk through an assessment with our district-wide equity team. So that's why I wanted to add that as an extra. We took three meetings to do that process. Is that right, Anna and Nikki? Four. It was a long process, but we kind of walked through those to really deep dive into where the group was feeling Red Wing was at, at this point. We also cut down each of those categories and we kind of prioritized where we wanted to go with each of those. Not saying it's never, but saying like, where do we wanna do for year three? What would we like to do in four and five? So this was the document we used to create the document that you have in front of you as well. I just wanted to make sure that you guys knew where that was coming from. Questions on that? And how we got to where we are? Okay.
So then I throw in that there are links on that. So any of those statements, there is a link where it has like additional research or more information. And I found all of that super helpful. I don't think I've read through all of them yet, but the ones that I kind of particularly had a question about, it was really helpful to be able to click those links. So it was a really good resource.
Jess, you're muted now.
Sorry. One of the things that I wanted to, I would, I would be happy to answer any questions about all of the Direction Three. But where I thought it might be helpful is the last time we were all together, we focused on these action items from the school board. And I thought it would be good to kind of circle back. How we're using this five-year document is that it's an ongoing accountability document. And if we get to a place where something shifts or changes, that this is where we keep all of that to make sure we're all still going in those directions of our priorities from our referendum and what the people in our community has, have asked us to work on. One of the, the bottom one there is something that the district-wide equity team wanted to bring back to the school board for discussion. This is one of, that's why it's highlighted. So this is not one that you all agreed to. It's one that was, it was requested. The district-wide equity team wanted to bring it back. The explicitly condemned systemic racism in communications to students, families and community members and recommit, we're committed to promoting equity district-wide. So this was a request to see are, is the school board wanting that to be on our five-year plan for year three? So that would mean, that would be an action we would implement in year three. I'm bringing it just as the lead of the district-wide equity committee. And then this is a space for you all to say, yes, this is something that we wanna be added. How we do it, that's a different conversation. But that's something that was requested from our committee. So the other ones, we can talk about if we're changing those or adding them. I know I will be talking about the first one, the implementing focus groups and how we're going forward with that with Anna and Jennifer and Nikki. But any questions about this specific part in here? Or comments?
I do have a question. Do we want to, if, if we're gonna explicitly condemn systemic racism, racism, I'm saying we should or we shouldn't. But do we need to perhaps say what we believe that is? I mean, I think we talked about that prior, but you know, what is, what is it that we feel that is and looks like? Cause it's systemic racism, I think, might mean different things to different people depending on who you are, where you are, what you believe in or don't believe in. And, you know, I, I, I know what I think it means. I, I think I could speak collectively for us. But I just, if we're gonna put something out there specifically, maybe we need to say what that is. Just a thought. Jennifer?
I, I agree, Anna. I, I think we should explicitly condemn systemic racism, but do we need to define what that is overall on the same page?
I think I agree with that, but I'm having trouble hearing Pam. I could hear better than, was it Jennifer?
Yeah, sorry Nikki, I was.
Okay, okay, thank you. I, I, I think I heard you agree with Pam. And I would have to also agree with Pam, you know, to different people, it means different things. And, and a workshop, I brought it up many, many months ago, like a lot of these things are words to some of you, whereas they're feelings and actual things that I go through and my community goes through, you know? So it, it means different things to different people. So being on the same page and having the same common goals is a great idea.
I think we also need to define equity because we have that in some of our statements. And I think that I define it as making sure that people have what they need to succeed. Regardless, you know, and so that's gonna mean different things for different people. But I think that having that, the more that, because these words are not just words. You know, they, they need to translate into actions. And I think the more that we can be clear about what those things mean for us as a district, that the more we can all be on that same page and know what we're working towards. Holly?
Yes, I, I hesitate with the thoughts around we have to come up with because it's, it's been defined repeatedly over and over. It's in the dictionary. So would we be haggling with the dictionary or with social terminology or research-based terminology to what the definition actually is? Or are we haggling over our own value system and belief system? Because if it's in writing and it's been documented and research-based, then it, that's, that would be the term. But our value system around how we interpret that term is where we struggle as people. And so I, I, I really, I think in terms of we have to define, it's already defined. We have to acknowledge that it's defined. And then within our own selves, work through our biases and acknowledge that we have them. Because if we say it doesn't exist, or it doesn't exist like that, we could be around the table for months and months. So I, I struggle with us saying we have to define it. It's already been defined, but we have to own our value system around it.
Jennifer, I would just say, I, I agree, Holly, in being careful in saying that we need to define it. But I do think that we can all need to have that definition front and center so that we can all see this is what it means. So that there's no question what it is, whether that comes from the dictionary, you guys should, or, you know, sources that are, a number of sources out there that define systemic racism and equity in the exact same way. And so it should be clear to us what it is. But it just needs to be out there so that we, as a district, as a community, see it, know it, understand that's what we're talking about.
Yes, that's, well, check the words right on, yeah. We don't know what we're combating if we don't know what we're combating.
Where would you suggest, like where would you take it from? If, where, if it's brought back, I mean, I'm not, who's going to be bringing those definitions back and to where? And which, where do you wanna find those?
With your equity work, Jess, do you have a suggestion on that? I mean, I don't know that Merriam-Webster is, is always the best spot, but in, that's what I was gonna say, Jess, is that you have a lot of experience and if, if you're willing, you may have the best options for it.
Also, I'd like to suggest that maybe that information goes through the equity team so we can get a broader view of what equity means.
Okay. I was just gonna pull up from, but you want it to go through the equity team? For them to confirm that it is the definition, what, what does it go through the equity team for? What do I ask them?
Well, this, and maybe you and I can talk offline about, you know, how we take the next step. But, you know, I, I think it's important to solicit feedback, you know, from, you know, a wide range. If we have a certain suggestion, then I think we need to, to talk to, you know, people on that team to make sure we're on the same page and on the right path.
This is, I would, I would just add to that, just what Nikki said, you know, that for some of us, it's a word with a definition. For others, it's a feeling and a lived experience. And so I think if we could just verify with members of our equity committee who have the lived experience, just to make sure that we're on the right page. I don't think it needs to be a long process, you know, it should be pretty agreed upon immediately with that group, I would think.
Is this fair? Do you guys see what I'm typing there? And then I'm gonna let me buy it?
Sure.
Okay.
The more I think about this, I think this is really key and central to everything we do moving forward. You know, having this defined, agreed upon piece of feeling and definition that we're combating. I mean, I, you know, I, I think you're exactly right. Like it's a feeling, but it's a word. And I, I don't necessarily have the same experience that Nikki does or that Karsten does. And it's, it's not necessarily a bias, but I think, again, if we don't know what we're combating, how you combat it. So I think if we have a working, something to work off of, that's really important. So that we all are on the same page. Yes, Holly?
Thank you. I just wanna frame it in a more positive way that being a diverse, aware, organized school climate isn't something we should have to combat. It is something that we should look to celebrate and achieve. And this, this is, it's hard work, but the end result should be something that we celebrate, that this is how we honor everybody in our district, in our community. We come together and celebrate that we're diverse. I don't think I've ever been in a classroom where somebody says, y'all need to look the same, be the same, act the same. Yet we struggle with that as human beings to accept people that don't look the same, act the same, you know, same hair, same color, whatever it may be. So if we can work to frame it in a real positive, like this is where we're headed as a community, to celebrate our diversity. I, I think that feels better. And I know, I, I understand what you're saying, Pam, in terms of the, the work where some people are real reticent to understand or acknowledge.
Yeah. Really well said, Holly. I think you're right. We, we are, we do need to celebrate our differences and not be afraid of that. And also recognize, I think you said it, Anna, that everybody, you know, learns differently. They're different people and we need to celebrate that, acknowledge that and figure out how to work together around that, not be scared of it. All right. Jess, any last things before we move forward with our evening?
The only thing I had was just updating, the last thing I had was updating on the progress of the training. And, and then the work that Anna and Jennifer had asked about with soliciting feedback. Did you still wanna go to that?
Absolutely.
Okay. So with this, exactly what Holly and Pam were talking about, like I think that it's just in, it's our vision and our mission of Red Wing Public Schools in this work that we're doing, but we're just living it. And we're living it for all kids. And so I think that that's the most important thing when we go back and phrasing it in a positive way, just like Holly said, is that we're living our mission and our vision in a positive way for all kids. And again, due to the, the referendum and, and the support that we got in the community, this Direction Three is where that's living. Creating a responsive, safe and open, respectful environment for all schools and programs and all kids. So we did, this, this is gonna be the update. EAB gave us some background. And then if we still wanted to check in on those school board actions and where we're at with them and see if we needed to change anything, would be where I'm at. Obviously, these are our norms from before, so please make sure that we're still here of speaking our truth from where we come from, staying engaged, experiencing discomfort. And then as always in this journey that we're on, expecting and accepting non-closure. I think we are all here. We are all going to make mistakes and please assume positive intent. I feel like that was a very well modeled by our EAB guests and that we keep learning every time they give a presentation to make sure that they are aware of who's in the space. So I'll go back to these after. But for our staff development, we do have Dr. Sharaki Hali. He is going to do an all-staff presentation around validating, affirming, building and bridging. That'll be all staff. You all are invited to come. It is August 31st. From eight till 11:00 in the morning, we'll be at Treasure Island in order, just with the space, the sheer amount of people that we will have. So we will be out at Treasure Island and we hope that you all can be there. We will have three. have three, um, separate trainings through Dr. Shiroki Hali. We will do one that is all-staff, that really focuses on, um, how we interact with each other, and then with our students in the building as well, which is where his babbing comes from. They're hoping that becomes a verb then within the district. How do we validate, affirm, build, and bridge each other and our students in the building? Um, then we would do, uh, culturally responsive classroom management. That would be for our paraprofessionals and our teachers, which would be in the afternoon. And then the next day, which we're working with him, is either going to be the next day or in January, based on, um, how he wants to work with our district. We need to do a culturally responsive teaching and learning jumpstart in order to have a coaching relationship with him and his team. And so, which I think is the most important, especially in listening to EAB. Like, we can do these one-and-done trainings, but the open and honest conversation and teacher coaching is really where the rubber meets the road, to quote Holly. Um, and there are, uh, there are examples and districts that have been utilizing him. Um, and George and Isaac actually witnessed him doing coaching with their teachers in Rochester, which, uh, they were very excited that we would have the opportunity to work with him again. Sorry, Holly, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, I would love to attend, but that's my first day workshop. So I am not able to attend, but I would love to attend. Is anything going to be taped?
I actually just had a teacher ask about that because they'll, they'll be somewhere else, so that's where I am. And my next step is, how do we do that effectively? And also if he will allow us to do that. Um, and so, but we're working on it. It might be streamed. It might be our compromise, is that it will be streamed but not recorded, so that we can't utilize it in the future for our own purposes. Jess?
Yes, sorry, that's what I was just going to ask.
Yep, it'll be August 31st, eight to 11:00. But I'll also send that out to you guys once I have the beautiful invite.
Thank you.
Uh, so, so then, um, some of the work that we would do next is this coaching within the classroom, um, with our teachers, which that has been something that our, um, equity team has asked for. Like, we get it, you guys are doing training for your administrative team, but what about us? Um, and so this is kind of our next step into our work and into our plan. Um, the other side would be, um, our anti-bias training with all staff through Sam Oak. He took, actually was in Faribault as their, um, equity liaison, I believe, and now he is working for Savage and, um, Prior Lake. And he, they worked with Dr. Shiroki Hali, so he called me and said, can I come to your equity training? I need background on, um, Dr. Shiroki Hali. But now he's going to bring his lens on what the work that they did in Faribault. And so what he's going to do is create these anti-bias 101, 201, and 301 to do throughout the year. With, um, him and I will then build follow-up discussion and conversation starters for our directors, for our principal building leads, to be able to have those conversations on the ground with their staff at the level that, um, that they understand, right? That they, that they're actually going to have conversations with and about our students, and then with and about our staff. So, um, that is, that would be the update on our staff development side of the equity plan. And then, I did somebody's name? I didn't, I heard a noise. No? Okay. And then the, the last thing, and I'll let Jennifer and Anna, and it's, it's not pretty because we don't have a, um, a mock-up of it yet, um, but Anna and Jennifer, I'll let you talk about kind of this, the why we have the postcard.
This is Jennifer. Um, I would say, as we've talked to all of you before about, um, Anna and I met with Michelle Lysik with the City of Red Wing a while ago, and got some amazing feedback from her on what we can do as a district to collect feedback from a variety of different, uh, members of our community. Um, it is, in many ways, it feels that we're getting, um, feedback from some of the same people over and over again, that people that know, um, it feels the most comfortable in contacting us. So what we would like to do is do outreach and, um, connection with the community, um, in as many ways as we can, in as many places as we can. So for a discussion with that, um, Jess proposed, um, a postcard idea, and this came from Michelle, too. It's something the city had done. Um, but the idea was to create a postcard, um, and keep it very simple, that we could hand out to community boards, um, at particular places. So, um, it would be a place where school board members or, um, you know, other members of our school community could go and, um, meet with community members kind of one-on-one in a quick way. For example, we could be outside of a pool one day and have the postcards there, have, um, you know, pens and markers and things, so that people could fill them out on the spot, um, and we could collect feedback from them. We could, um, be at the, um, uh, school supply pickup, um, when Alex has that, um, probably in different places. Perhaps we could work with community organizations, with Hispanic Outreach, with Youth Outreach, um, with, uh, for our Indian community. If there are events that are already occurring, could they help us get feedback, um, through these postcards? So, the two questions we talked about was, um, just to keep it very simple, what do you like about Red Wing Public Schools, and what would you change about Red Wing Public Schools? Um, we would then take this information, and hopefully this could be a starting place for our communications manager, for our strategies moving forward, um, on, you know, what do we need to focus on within our district? As we've seen in the last week, um, there have been communication issues, and so this is just one first step, and how can we, um, get feedback from people and form a plan moving forward? So, Jess, I don't know what you want to add to that, or Anna?
I just want to add that, so we're, the idea is that we will have this as a printed postcard that people could take and fill out later, but it's not just another survey. Like, the, the idea is to be physically present and be having these conversations with people. Um, and, you know, if, if somebody is verbally talking to me about what they like and what they would change, that I could even write that down for them. Um, to be present, and it really, like, seek people out. So, not just like a stack of postcards on, um, you know, the front desk at the school, that people have to come in and pick up, or, you know, whatever, but that we're reaching out and being out in the community to say, hey, we are looking for more of your input. We're looking for feedback. We want to invite you to be part of the conversation of how our schools function. Um, and that this is really just a very first step. It's, um, just kind of to start those conversations. And Holly, a question about postage, we are trying to figure that out. That, of course, will increase the cost, but, um, you know, that's something that we're looking at, is what the options are for having like a reply, you know, drop that people can, um, actually put it in the mail.
So I do have the answers for that through Allegra. Um, they just basically said to us, you're gonna, for what you're wanting, you, we can leave a spot for posted, postage, but you will just have to do that. Um, so it would just be the cost of a stamp, um, multiplied by how many we have. So, but I think one of the, one of the biggest things that we've heard in the community is that we don't feel invited to give feedback. And so that was the strategy, the idea of the strategy, I think, from Anna and Jennifer, were to be in places that we normally aren't, um, to elicit feedback instead of just a general survey. Is that fair?
And to not necessarily have a special event for this, but to be present where people already are, um, especially, you know, for the people who don't feel like they're welcome at special events, that, you know, we're committed. The idea would be to meet people where they are.
So unless others have, have questions, the only thing I had on the rest of the agenda was, um, just to, if we wanted to circle back on the commitments that you all had already made, or if we wanted to move that to our next equity workshop. Yeah, I see a lot of yeses doing this, so I'm guessing that we want to add that to the next equity workshop.
I agree with that.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you all.
Thank you so much, Jess. And then I will look for a motion to adjourn our workshop. We'll take a five-minute break and come back on the other, um, platform for our special meeting at, well, let's take a five-minute break, so 7:25.
Do we have to adjourn this? Do, do we have to adjourn this meeting?
Yes, I believe we do, and then we'll open the other one up.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we'll take a roll call vote, starting with Mr. Derricks.
With who?
You.
Uh, I, you broke up, so.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Ms. Tipt?
Aye.
Chair votes, aye. We're adjourned at 7:21. Let's do 7:26 on the other one.
I just so the public knows it will be the same.
The public does not need to go anywhere. Stay here, stay tuned. We'll take a five-minute break, and we'll be right back. Thank you, everyone.